The Planning and Zoning Commission at 6:30 PM. We have a quorum. We have four regular members and three alternates. In accordance to my notes and rotation, Marty, I have you up for voting tonight. Is that okay with you?
Hold on. Joe, I wasn't going to be able to vote on the minutes because I wasn't present last meeting.
Okay. Did you at least read those? You could abstain.
Yeah, okay. But I just didn't know what your procedure.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Okay, good.
Okay, for the audience, I ask you to place yourselves on mute if you can, except when you want to speak. We have a legal notice. There were four of them, so this is going to take a few minutes to read. Zone change application for MMCT Venture LLC for parcels located at 113, 115, and 119 Prospect Hill Road for zone change from R2 to B1 residential to business. Copies above application are available on the Town Clerk's webpage and the Planning and Zonings page on the town website. All interested persons may appear and be heard online at the online meeting dated April 29, 2020. This appeared in the Journal Inquirer on April 30, as well as May 7, 2020. Second legal notice, a zone change application for Michael Ferretti for a parcel located at 202 Main Street for a zone change from M1 to R2 manufacturing to residential. A full copy of the application is available on the Town Clerk's webpage and in the Planning and Zonings webpage on the town website. All interested persons may appear online in the public hearing to be heard on the topic. This dated April 29, 2020. This appeared in the Journal Inquirer editions April 30 and May 7, 2020. Third one, it's a re-subdivision application for Michael Ferretti to create two residential lots around two existing homes, the R2 zone, to create one commercial lot for existing indoor soccer facility in the M1 zone. A full copy of the application is available on the Town Clerk's website and on the Planning and Development Planning and Zonings Commission's webpage on the town website. All interested persons may attend the online meeting and be heard on this topic dated April 29, 2020. This appeared in the Journal Inquirer editions April 30, as well as May 7, 2020. And finally, application of East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission for tax amendments to alcohol sales, including amendments to Section 203, that's a definition of alcohol sales. 502, that's permitted uses in business and industrial districts. 504.7, alcohol sales in the HIZ zone. And 805, general requirements for alcohol sales. The changes requested would remove certain distance requirements in the sale of alcohol from other uses such as places of worship, charitable institutions, hospital convalescent homes, cemeteries, libraries, public playgrounds, and municipal buildings. A full copy of the application is available in the Planning and Zoning in Town Clerk's website on the town webpage. All interested persons may appear on the online meeting. This appeared in the Journal Inquirer on April 30, 2020, as well as May 7, 2020. Since my tenure as chair, I don't think I've ever had to read four of them in a row like that. Next up, added agenda items. I think there are none. Hey Len, we unofficially spoke offline about a person that may want to have some comments come in. Is that going to be at a future meeting?
Actually, it was a... It was questioned by one individual in particular, but it's going to affect every restaurant or eating establishment in town because when the governor opens it up, he's only going to allow outdoor eating. And there's an article in the journal tonight. And the headline was "Suffield Makes It Easier For Restaurants To Open For Outdoor Dining." And they talk about how that for a regular permit, there's a lengthy process, but they're got a one-pager that they're going to work on. And they believe that they could give a permit the same day that the people apply for. I mean, they're keeping it pretty low-key. Basically, find a spot in your parking lot, put some cones around it, and throw some tables and call it good. I don't know that that's exactly what the governor wants to do, but I think the board needs to think about how they may want to... Because that's going to be the only livelihood for many of these restaurants.
I think there's some internal staff discussion later on this week, so I think that I prefer to defer this topic to a future meeting, perhaps when the governor issues some additional guidelines or executive orders clarifying what may or may not be allowed. And maybe after town staff deliberates amongst themselves and prep things up for the commission to deliberate on. So this will probably be an item for the next meeting if we're ready.
I would agree, Joe. You have that conference Zoom meeting with the Health Department and what have you, and that'll be after, I believe, the governor, maybe after the governor comes up with whatever his new executive order is. But yes, I just wanted the board to know that they probably should start to think about this.
Very good. Thank you. This is the public participation part of our meeting. Are there any comments in the public for something that's not already on tonight's agenda? Anybody wishing to speak? I'll take that as a no. Next up, approval of minutes, April 28, 2020. Any commission member have any comments, questions, edits, concerns? About the draft minutes? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, 1778 of April 28, 2020, as presented.
The motion made by Commissioner Sullivan. Is there a second?
Second.
I will second it. Marty?
I think Jim may have you beat by... Jim, was that you that jumped in first?
No, that was Mike.
Okay, Mike.
Was it Mike?
Second by Mike. Any discussion? Here or none? I call for a vote. I'll have a roll call. Those who are in agreement, say aye. So Joe Willett, aye.
Richard Sullivan, aye.
Jim Thurs, aye.
Mike Kowalski, aye.
Tim Moore, aye.
Marty. Marty Shigailo, aye.
Frank, if I'm voting, I read them and...
Okay, so we have a... Yeah, motions approved, unanimous. Tim, did I hear your voice in the background, Tim Moore?
Yeah, yeah, I just figured out Zoom, yeah.
All right. Are you going to be able to join us for the entire meeting?
Sure.
Okay, so that being said, Marty, all our regular members are now present for the meeting, so can you just stay in the background and participate in the dialogue and contribute where you can?
Okey-dokey.
All right, thank you.
Trying to tell you to be quiet.
No, I'd not. No, no. Don't read between the lines. That's not true. All right. Next up, under new public hearings. Item A, a zone change application, MMCT Venture LLC for parcels located at 113, 115, and 119 Prospect Hill Road for a zone change from R2 to B1 that's residential to business. And there are some lot numbers associated. I'll just read it for the record. Assessors, parcel IDs, map block, lot numbers, 112-114-005, 112-14004, and 112-14003. And I think I saw Dory. Hi, Dory.
Hi, how are you? Good evening.
Yours, yep.
Thank you. For the record, I'm Dory Thamagletti from Cahan-Karenzki in Capicella. As you know, I represent MMCT Venture in connection with its development of its East Windsor properties. A couple of preliminary matters before we jump to the zone change. The application was formally received on April 14 at your meeting that evening. As you noted, Mr. Chairman, the notice of the public hearing has been published in the Journal Inquirer. At the same time, it was published in the Journal Inquirer. As of the first publication date, a copy of the application was also posted by town staff on both the Planning and Zoning website and the Town Clerk's website. So that's in compliance with the governor's executive orders. And although with most zone change applications, a sign would typically be posted on the property, Governor's Executive Order 7i suspended that requirement. And all that's required now in the interim with this pandemic is the posting on the town's website. So that takes care of that. In addition, you require notice to abutters within 100 feet. Based on the town's GIS mapping, which I included on the abutters list for the application, the only additional property owners within 100 feet of these three parcels are properties owned by MMCT. So I did not send any formal notice. You don't have the affidavit of notice or the documentation of notice having gone out because the only person by the town records required to be noticed was, in fact, MMCT. Having said that, as a courtesy, we did provide electronic notice to the owners of Sophia's Plaza because they have been an interested party in the development of these properties all along, and also to Sophia's Plaza attorney. So we did provide electronic notice of that, just as a courtesy. I believe the commission's pretty familiar with the site that we're talking about tonight, the three subject parcels. These parcels were part and among the consolidated parcels that were the subject of the casino application that you heard and approved almost two years ago now. I do have a presentation board. I don't know... It has been submitted for public inspection. I don't know if you can see it. Just give me a quick yes or no if it's worth me showing this on the monitor or not. Can you see that well enough?
Yeah, we can see the highlighted parcels, yes.
Okay, super. So we did submit this previously, so it should also appear in your documentation on the website. But the subject parcels are 119, 115, and 113 Prospect Hill Road. They're colored here in yellow, and as you noted previously, they're currently zoned R2. The first two, 119 and 115, the northerly two, are just over a half an acre in size. The southerlymost one is about a third of an acre in size. Now, due to the court appeal that was taken by Sophia's Plaza of the casino approval and then the subsequent decision of the court overturning the approvals, the applicant MMCT has decided to seek an alternative way of developing the property. And I'm noting that it's an alternative way because in the court's decision in connection with that casino appeal, the court was highly critical of the town's HIZ regulations, and revising those regulations could require a fairly comprehensive rewrite. And then I suspect that the revised regulations would only open the door to yet another legal challenge and attack by the opponents who are continuing their efforts to either delay or defeat this project. So rather than pursuing development according to the HIZ path, MMCT believes that with some minor adjustments to its ultimate plans, it can develop this property for its proposed use under the B1 regulations. Now, I will note, and you probably recall, that 105 Prospect Hill Road that I'm pointing to here now is also owned by MMCT, and that's currently zoned B1. That's the majority of the site that my client owns. It's just over 26 and a half acres in size. Since these smaller three parcels are contemplated, whether it's in connection with the casino or any other development conceptually that could happen on this property, these will become part of the larger parcel. It makes sense for these three pieces, therefore, to be under the same zoning classification as the larger parcel. And that's the whole reason that we're here tonight applying for a zone change for parcels 1, 2, and 3 to the B1 zone. Now, in order to determine if the zone change is appropriate and consistent with the comprehensive plan of the town, we need to look at the zoning scheme for in and around the area. You're probably familiar with all of this, but for a complete record, I just want to take you through it. On Route 5, all of the properties between the 140 intersection and the 91 interchange zone, where we've got HIZ down southerly near the new Walmart development, all of those properties on the west side of Prospect Hill Road or Route 5 are zoned B1. That includes both the existing MMCT site where the old cinema was, the next site down where the old Walmart was, and then the site further south of that, which is the Big Y area. So zoning these three properties consistent with everything else that's zoned B1 along the west side of the road is consistent with the comprehensive plan. I will note one exception. This parcel right here is owned by 93 Prospect Hill LLC. It's an entity owned and controlled by MMCT, but for reasons unrelated to this proposal, we are not including that in the zone change at this time. It may or may not become part of the ultimate site development, but we're leaving that out for right now, and that's currently zoned M1. If you look to the east side of Prospect Hill Road, Route 5, we see that you've got a little bit of a mix along the site frontage of B1 and B2. So, starting... Can you see my pen here? Starting here at the intersection, on the northerly side of the intersection, you've got Sophia's Restaurant, I believe it's a pizza restaurant, that's zoned B1. Sophia's Plaza itself is zoned B2. There's a small carve-out of a larger piece that's zoned B1, just south of Sophia's Plaza. As you work your way down southerly on that east side of Route 5, you've got a mix then of B1 and some residential zones, and then you work all the way down to the HIZ interchange that I was referring to earlier. And just north of the site, on the northerly side of the intersection, you also have a mix of B1 and B2 zones. So as you can see, and as you know just through being in town, this section of Route 5 is a fairly heavily developed commercial corridor. So changing these three parcels from a residential use, R2, to B1 is entirely consistent, I would submit, with the comprehensive plan. In fact, I believe it would be contrary to the comprehensive plan to leave them as is as R1 because then you just have these little pockets of residential use in the midst of a larger comprehensive development, commercial development along Route 5. Okay, give me one second to put that down, and then... Okay. I can pull the board back up at any point if you'd like me to put it back up. In addition, though, to finding that the proposed zone change is consistent with a comprehensive plan, you also have to look at your plan of conservation and development to confirm that it's consistent with that as well. And I'm going to call your attention to just a couple of sections. I've recited them in my narrative, but again, for a complete record, because we know everything that's happening on this site is done under a microscope, we want to make sure that we get it all documented. So consistency with the plan of conservation and development. I'm going to cite you first at Chapter 3 of the plan, which is entitled "Guiding Development." And there it instructs you that business and commercial development should be geared towards increasing the tax base, employment and shopping opportunities, and creating a regional economic vitality. Changing these properties, these R2 properties, to B1 enables all three of those things. It enables a commercial redevelopment of these small residential sites. I believe the houses have now all been taken down, so now they're vacant sites. And it supports all of those directives in the plan for guiding development in commercial zones. And whether it's ultimately developed as the casino, which we fully intend and expect to pursue, or if it's just developed for any of the other uses that are currently allowed in the B1 zone, it meets those principles in the Plan of Conservation and Development. The Plan of Conservation and Development also incorporates all of the recommendations from the Route 5 corridor study. And in that corridor study, it locates this section of Route 5 and these properties in particular in the crossroads zone. And the focus uses for the crossroad zones includes retail, services, recreation, and restaurants. Well, we all know that we're ultimately going to be proposing casino use here, which is a commercial recreation use, as the commission's previously decided. Even if that were to go forward, though, changing again to the B1 zone, it allows in the B1 zone as permitted uses all of those focus uses that the corridor study encourages for this area. So rezoning these three parcels from R2 to B1, we suggest is entirely consistent with not just the comprehensive plan as to how this section of town has developed and how the zoning regs anticipate it will be developed, but it's also consistent with the directives of the Plan of Conservation and Development. So for all of these reasons, I think it's pretty straightforward. Leaving these properties R2, I think, is not what your guiding documents request and require of you, but in fact, changing them to B1, and then to ultimately be consolidated into the 105 Prospect Hill Road to allow for a consolidated and integrated development of adjoining pieces, which is also encouraged by your zoning regulations. These are all valid reasons, I think, to support the proposed zone change that's before you. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I can put the board back up if you have specific questions about the board. Otherwise, I'll just take your questions.
I'm going to try to keep this as orderly as possible. I'm going to go around. Commissioner Sullivan, you have any comments, questions?
I have a comment. I don't have any questions. I think that leaving it the way that it is is an example of just totally irresponsible spot zoning.
Thank you. Tim, any comments or concerns, questions?
I think that was all well explained. I think it all makes sense.
Okay, Jim?
Why didn't we change the zone in the first place for those three houses?
The reason we didn't change the zone in the first place is because we were planning on having them all developed under the HIZ regulations, which is an overlay zone, so there was no reason to change the underlying zone if we weren't going to take advantage of the underlying zone. We were instead focusing on the HIZ regulations. But now that those have been so called into question, and because we just expect that they'll be the subject of more litigation, we're trying to find another way to skin the cat, if you will.
Okay.
Mike?
Oh, I think Dorian did an excellent job in laying this out, and her line of thinking is totally understandable.
Ian?
I concur that it was a good presentation, and I concur that the three parcels should be zoned consistent with the surrounding property.
Thank you. Frank?
I concur also. I think it's rather obvious that it should be B1. There's no question in my mind. Good job.
And Marty? If you're speaking, you're on mute? Marty?
Okay, I found the button. It's okay. Yes, I agree with... It kept flipping off, so I couldn't catch the unmute it. Anyway, I agree that that makes more sense than not, so I'm supportive of it.
Okay, I also do not have any questions for Dory. So what I will do, this is a public hearing. Are there any comments in the public on this zone change application? If you're trying to speak, you might be on mute? I'm not hearing any. Well, fellow commissioners, is there anything else to talk about before we take action to close the public hearing?
I do not have anything.
I'm all set. It's fine with me.
I'm good.
I agree. I'm ready to proceed. Likewise.
Okay, I heard enough. So, Dory, any final comments before we...
Further, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, there should be two motions. We need to close the public hearing. Then we also need to deliberate and consider approval of the zone change application. So we'll take the first step. We'll close... Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing on the zone change following properties, 113 Prospect Hill Road, 115 Prospect Hill Road, and 119 Prospect Hill Road.
There's a motion, Commissioner Sullivan, to close the public hearing for the zone change application for MMCT Venture LLC. Is there a second?
I will second, Mike.
Michael seconded it. Any discussion? Here or none? I call for a vote. We'll have a roll call. Those who are in favor, say aye. Joe Willett?
Richard Sullivan?
Jim Thurs, aye.
Mike Kowalski, aye.
Tim Moore, aye.
Okay, that's a quorum. That's five. Thank you. All right, so next, taking action on the application. There should be a motion for approval that was drafted and sent to you via email earlier today.
Jeff, what's your secretary, Richard?
No, I can't do it. I lost my cellphone somewhere today, and I think it's run over on the road, and so I don't have the email that I need.
Does anyone else have that copy of the email that could offer a motion for approval?
Mike Kowalski has everything.
Yeah, I'll take it. All right, I make a motion to approve the petition for a zoning change by MMCT Ventures LLC, requesting a zone change, a change, zone change, zone map amendment from R2 to B1 at properties located at 113, 115, and 119 Prospect Hill Road, map 12, block 14, lots 003, 004, 005, all located on the west side of Prospect Hill Road because the application conforms to the Plan of Conservation and Development for the town of East Windsor. It's consistent with the Route 5 corridor planning and will promote public health and safety. This approval is granted subject to conformance with the reference plans, as may be modified by the conditions and the following conditions. Would you like me to read all the conditions for the record, or just reference them?
Just indicate how many there are in that document.
As reference conditions 1 through 4 on page 2 of a memo from Len Norton, PE Director of Public Works and Town Engineer, dated May 11, 2020.
There's a motion on the table for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Thurs. Any discussion? Here or none? A call for a vote. We'll take a roll call. Those in favor, say aye. Joe Willett?
Richard Sullivan, aye.
Jim Thurs, aye.
Mike Kowalski, aye.
Tim Moore, aye.
And that is unanimous. And I believe for the record, the statement of justification was read. It was part of the motion. I'm in full agreement with what was prepared. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Dory.
Thank you, Dory.
Next up, under public hearings. Michael Ferretti. Michael Ferretti for a zone change application for a parcel located at 202 Main Street for a zone change from M1 to R2, that's manufacturing to residential. And there's also another public hearing on the same applicant for re-subdivision application to create two residential lots around two existing homes in the R2 zone and create one commercial lot for existing indoor soccer facility in the M1 zone. Is there someone here to present this tonight?
Yes, Joe Ursery from Russo's, I think, come off mute. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. I can hear you, Joe.
All right, Joe Ursery from JR Russo and Associates, representing Michael Ferretti. The application we have before you tonight is for a zone change at 202 Main Street. Currently, 202 Main Street serves as kind of a mixed use of residential and commercial. In the northwest corner of the property, there are two residential houses. The rest of the property serves as an indoor and outdoor sports facility, as well as some agricultural use. The parcel lies in two zones, both the M1 and the R2 zone. The purpose of this zone change is to take about 1.3 acres of the M1 zone and change it to the R2 zone to create two lots for the two houses in the northwest corner of the property. We believe this is in compliance with the plan of conservation and development, of mixed development of residential and commercial use in the Warehouse Point District in which these houses fall. We believe it fits the model of the POCD. I'd be happy to answer. Any questions anyone has?
Joe, this is Joe Wolet, the chairman. I got a question for you. Procedurally, do you want to take these applicants, applications individually, where you want to discuss them together?
Whatever you, my plan was separately, but if you guys want to take them at the same time, I'd be happy to do that. What would you guys prefer?
Why don't you, why don't we continue regarding the rest of the application? But when we make a motion, we'll be sure to separate the application, the zone change, from the re-subdivision because they require distinct motions.
Okay, I'll just get my other plan in front of me here. So the purpose of the re-subdivision is basically to create two lots for the two houses in the northwest corner of the property that comply to the current zoning regulations. And then the remainder of the land will serve as property for the sports and recreation facility. The house in the front is served by sanitary sewer, gas, and water. The house in the back is served by a public water supply, but is on a septic system. There is a shared driveway for both houses. The house in the rear is accessed through the driveway for the house in the front. So we've created an easement for the rear lot for ingress and egress as well. The water supply for the house in the back is served from the house in the front. We've created an easement for that as well, as well as the overhead electric. And we've retained an easement for the remaining land for the sports facility. Their detention basin drains through these front lots. So we've left them an easement for that as well. I think that about sums up a general overview of what's going on here. Does anyone have any questions?
Just to point a comment, looks like you got a memo from North Central Health District on this one? Is that where I'm thinking of another applicant?
No, that's correct. We got comments from Mike Corona, the Health Department. So basically, his concern was he had a plan from, I believe, 1989, when this was being proposed to be subdivided at that point. And it showed that the house in the rear, the septic system, had failed. And he has no record of any repair of the system. So he was suggesting an inspection, a video inspection, and a pumper's report of the system. Although the owner, the owner has known, you know, the system appears to be functioning fine. But that being said, you know, whether the system's functioning or needs to be repaired or has failed, the sanitary sewer is available on the road. And we've left an easement. If there's need for the house in the rear to connect, we've left an easement through the front lot for the rear lot to connect into the sanitary sewer if that was needed.
Okay. And I also just note that Len Norton has reviewed it and he doesn't have any comments, my understanding. Quickly reading his memo.
Len didn't have any comments, I believe.
Correct. So why don't we go around the table, around the virtual screen, excuse me, see if there's any commission comments for Joe. Dick, do you have any comments on either the zone change and/or the subdivision application? So we're discussing both of those, but take separate approval motions.
Okay, I don't, I don't have a question on the zone change. But I'm looking at the plans here and either I'm missing it or it's just not here is the location of the proposed lots with houses.
So that is on sheet three of three called re-subdivision claim?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at, Joe, and I'm just missing it.
Sorry, what again are you missing?
I am looking at three of three. And, you know, I see the two existing houses. And you know, I'm just not getting an easy picture of the two new lots or where a house locations would be on them.
Well, the, are you looking for the proposed lot lines? Is that what you're saying?
Oh, yeah, actually.
So in the, in the rear of the property or towards, on the west side of this sheet, there's a line that comes across just to the, or sorry, just to the east of the house in the rear. It's dimension 334.13. That would be the rear property line of the back house.
Okay, all right. I see that and that's where the approximate location of the septic tank is?
The septic tank is just to the west of that property line, correct?
Okay.
Next to the gravel drive.
And the other lot would be right after that?
So the other lot, the rear property line, do you see where the hatch ends on the driveway there?
Yes.
There's a property line that comes across and it says 140.41.
Yes.
That would be the rear property line of the front house. And then the right-hand side property line of that house is dimension 183.68. It goes through where the overhead electric goes through.
Oh.
Now, that would, that would define the front line.
Okay. And all of these are going to be accessed through the drive, which is on the north side?
Correct, yep. The rear lot or the lot in the house in the back has an easement or will have an easement over for ingress and egress over the house in the front.
Okay. All right, I have a picture of this now.
He went in on a Sunday and repaired the septic system.
Starting to see some of the logistical challenges of having a virtual meeting when you can't point to a location on a plane.
Yeah, it'd be a lot easier if we had a colored plan in front of everybody, but.
We'll make do. We'll do the best we can. So Dick, I'll circle back around with you if you have any additional comments. Jim? You're up.
What are you planning on putting in that commercial property? Commercial lot?
The commercial lot is where Sports World or the soccer dome is. They have several outdoor fields, parking lot, drive, the soccer dome. That's what's there now. These two houses and the soccer dome are all currently on one piece of property.
So basically, you're just stealing a little bit of land off of that property to the other house?
To cut out the two houses, yeah. They're basically an existing nonconformity now. You know, you got two residential dwellings on the same piece as a commercial development.
Okay, I'm good for now.
Mike, you're up.
Well, that was really close to what I was gonna ask. So currently, these two houses sit in an M1 zone? Is that my understanding?
Partially. The zone line goes between the front house and the rear house.
Okay, so the rear house is definitely sitting in an M1 zone?
Correct.
Okay, so I mean, that makes, that makes sense to put it in a conforming state of being in a residential location. So currently, is this property broken up into three sections currently or?
No, it's all, it's all one, it's all one piece of land.
It's all one piece of land. So even you have two, you have two residents without a defined property line between them?
Correct.
Okay, that's another.
I mean, they're all, they're all, obviously all under the same ownership. The people living in the houses are renters, but.
Understood. Okay, so it makes, it makes sense to divide them up into individual pieces of property. Because, I mean, just, just for the sake of ownership, ownership could be easily transferred that way.
Right.
Okay, I'm good.
Hey, Tim Moore, any comments, concerns?
Yeah, I remember when this came in before. I had a question about the egress drives that we're gonna get a right of way to them. I've already mentioned this, but it was connected over to the bubble. And I think we had delineated something as a possible fire escape or fire truck access for something in the back. But that might have been just because we had talked about adding something.
What you, you might be referring to, which, which we had no involvement with at that point, I think you're talking about the gravel drive that comes from the parking area for the sports bubble over to where these houses are. Is that correct?
That's correct.
The owner, Michael Ferretti, explained it to me. I think he was in before the commission sometime in the past. And I guess the area to the, to the east of these two lots that we're proposing is what's designated as his overflow parking area. And the gravel drive is the access to the overflow parking area.
I think I remember something to do with fire trucks when we put in a second lane accessing the regular parking lot. If I remember right, it was a little while back. But it might have been something that the fire department had recommended. And I might be wrong. Having access from another angle in case they got parking on the two-lane entrance exit.
Are you, so you're referring to back when there was, there was a parking issue here and they were parking on both sides of the main entrance?
That's possible.
Yeah. According to Michael Ferretti, he corrected that issue where, whereas if he gets into a situation where he doesn't have enough parking, the area in the field to the east of these two lots, north of the detention basin, is what's designated as his overflow parking area.
All right. Okay, I just remembered it being a topic of discussion. That was all I had.
Thank you. Frank, comments, concerns?
No, I remember something as Tim does, but I think it was due to the overflow parking and the fire department, the Warehouse Point Fire Department had some concerns. But obviously, he's taking care of that or appears he's taking care of that. I don't have any concerns now.
Thank you. Ian?
I'm fine, thanks.
Ian, Marty?
All is well here.
Okay, great. Hey, Len, I did see your staff memo, but from an engineering perspective or a town perspective, any concerns?
No, there's really, basically, the proposal is to create residential lots around the residential houses and leave the, you know, the commercial area is a commercial area and there's really nothing being proposed there. So nothing's gonna change other than someday they'll be able to possibly sell these houses because they'll have real lots around them.
I have a question for Len. When Mike was asked what was the proposal for the commercial zone, you had some hands clapping in your little box there. Is that a concern of yours or what?
No, Frank, actually, I just wanted, it seemed for a bit there there was a little confusion about what the subdivision was. And I was just gonna make it clear that it was just meant to subdivide out the two house lots around the existing houses. That's all.
Oh, so then, then you're in favor. You support this 100%?
I have no problems with it.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have one other question.
Go ahead.
The East Windsor Wetlands, that has been taken care of?
Yes, this is, the commission has seen this and we have a referral from the commission.
Okay.
This is a public hearing for a zone change application as well as a re-subdivision application. Are there any comments from the public on either of these two issues or applications, excuse me?
I have one. My name is Sharon McCray.
Go ahead, Sharon.
I just, we're right close to this situation. So again, there is not gonna be like any development, like housing it, putting it into a residential doesn't mean like a multifamily home's gonna go up there or apartment building or anything. It's just because they're right now zoned as like one thing and they really need to be zoned as residential.
That's correct.
Okay.
So it's gonna be, it's gonna be a dwelling unit, a single dwelling unit. And I guess they could put it into agriculture because that's allowed in any zone as well.
Okay.
Very specific things they can do, Sharon, in a residential zone.
Perfect. Thank you. Thanks.
Are there any other comments or concerns or questions in the public?
God. Hey, Joe and Commissioner, just regarding the Wetlands, they were at the Wetlands meeting last week and it was basically a referral because no work is proposed. And the Wetlands Commission basically just moved it along. They took a consensus that they did not have a problem with it because there were no activities proposed.
Okay, thank you. So Joe Ursery, are there any, you have any final comments or questions before we entertain closing the public hearing for the zone change application and the re-subdivision application?
If there's no further questions for me from anyone else, I'm all set.
Hey, anything else for Joe? Okay, so procedurally, we have to do three different things on this one. First order of business is to close the public, oh, excuse me, there's more than three. Close the public hearing and approve the, or deliberate on the zone change application. After that's done, so that's two separate motions. Then we need a motion to approve the two waivers associated with the subdivision application. Then we need to take a vote on the subdivision application. So I count a total of four different motions. So I count a total of four different motions for this, for this, these items on the agenda. Okay? So first up would be entertain a motion to close the public hearing for the zone change application.
Okay, Joe, are these, uh, two public hearings combined, we're closing them simultaneously?
We'll, uh, we'll close them independent of each other. We, we, we deliberated, we opened, so we, we'll close the public hearing for the zone change and vote on it, and we'll close the public hearing for the re-subdivision application. Consider the waivers, then deliberate on the, on the approval.
Okay, understood. So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on the petition for a zone change by Michael Fioretti, requesting a zone change, zone map amendment from M1 manufacturing to an R2 residential at properties located at 202 Main Street, map 101, block 12, lot 030, located on the east side of Main Street in East Windsor.
There's a motion to close the public hearing for a zone change application. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Sullivan, second. Any discussion? Here are none. I'll take a roll call for approval. Those in favor say aye. Joe Willett?
Dick Sullivan, aye.
Jim Thurs, aye.
Mike Kowalski, aye.
Tim Moore, aye.
Okay, that, that's five unanimous. The public hearing is closed, so why don't we, um, consider the, um, approval of the zone change application first?
Okay, any, any additional questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. I, I make a motion to approve the petition for zoning change by Michael Fioretti, requesting a zone change, zone map amendment from M1 to R2 at property located at 202 Main Street, map 101, block 12, lot 030, located on the east side of Main Street in Windsor. Because the application conforms to the plan of conservation and development for the town of East Windsor and will promote public health and safety, the approval is granted subject to conformity with the reference plans, as may be modified by the conditions. Uh, the following conditions are one through four on page two in a memo from Leonard J. Norton, P. Director of Public Works and Town Engineer, dated May 11th, 2020.
There's a motion on the table for approval, the zone change application, and the reason stated. Is there a second?
Second, Dick Sullivan.
Any discussion? Here are none. A call for, uh, roll, roll call approval. Ayes, Joe Willett?
Aye, Dick Sullivan.
Aye, Jim Thurs.
Aye, Mike Kowalski.
Aye, Tim Moore.
And that's five, and it's unanimous. Very good. I think we still need three more motions to go. We need to close the public hearing and the re-subdivision application.
Okay, I will make a motion to close the public hearing on a petition for re-subdivision by Michael, Michael Fioretti, requesting a re-subdivision to create two residential lots around two existing homes in the R2 zone, and to create one commercial lot for existing indoor soccer facility in the M1 zone, assessors parcel ID number map 101, block 12, lot 030, located on the east side of Main Street in East Windsor.
There's a motion to close the public hearing for the re-subdivision application. Is there a second?
Second.
It's all.
Any discussion? Here are none. I'll take a roll call for a vote for approval. Aye, Joe Willett?
Aye, Dick Sullivan.
Aye, Jim Thurs.
Aye, Mike Kowalski.
Aye, Tim Moore.
Do we get everybody? Is that five?
Yes, sir.
Bad counting. Slip at the wheel here. All right, so that, uh, public hearing is closed. Next order of business is to consider the two waivers associated with the app, uh, with the re-subdivision application.
Okay, then, any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, I, I make a motion to approve waivers for streetlights, which is section 6.5. Uh, as lots are on an existing state road, Route 510, no new road is proposed. And secondly, open space, section 7.0, subdivision will create lots for two existing non-conforming residents, 15 plus or minus acres on an athletic field or agricultural use.
There's a motion to approve the two waivers for streetlights and one for open space. Is there a second?
Second, Dick Sullivan.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Joe, I have, uh, we get Lou and, uh, money in lieu of, uh, open space?
Not, not in this particular case. We've had this debate, excuse me, debate before regarding subdivision applicant, re-subdivision applications in, and are the zoning regulations really clear on whether or not we have that right to do that? Uh, we certainly do for commercial properties or business zones. In the initial approval, I think there, there is intent. It's the re-subdivision that has, it's been a gray area for years.
I, I remember that. I think we decided not to.
Yeah, and it's one of those things that's on the list of, uh, zoning regulations to be clarified. That was probably from the, from the previous town planner, but nonetheless, it's on our list of things to clarify. That's my recollection. Is, is anyone have a different, a different opinion about that?
No.
I think in this case, it would probably make sense not to charge it since the houses are already there.
Yeah, I agree with Tim that those are pre-existing houses, and this is just, I'll say, correcting, um, the property lines so that they stand alone. I, I don't think it's right to be asking for, um, a fee in lieu of open space or open space because it's not creating more demand for recreation by building something new.
Any other comments or concerns? Here are none. A call for a vote. All who's in favor, aye. A roll call. Joe Willett, aye?
Dick Sullivan, aye.
Jim Thurs, aye.
Mike Kowalski, aye.
Tim Moore, aye.
Okay, the, the unanimous. All the waivers are approved, and finally, the motion for approval for the subdivision applicant, re-subdivision application.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the application of Michael Fioretti, requesting a re-subdivision property located at Main Street, East Windsor, map 101, block 12, lot 030, in the R2 and M1 zones, because the application conforms to plan of conservation and development for the town of East Windsor, and it preserves the, it preserves the public health and safety. This approval is granted subject to conformance with the reference plans, as may be modified by the conditions, and the following conditions of approval, one through three on page one, uh, four through 11 on page two in a memo from Leonard J. Norton, P. Director of Public Works, Town Engineer, dated May 11th, 2020.
There's a motion on the table for approval for the re-subdivision application. Is there a second?
Second, Dick Sullivan.
Any discussion? Here are none. I'll hear, uh, call for a approval, roll call for approval. Those who are in favor say aye. Joe Willett, aye?
Dick Sullivan, aye.
Jim Thurs, aye.
Mike Kowalski, aye.
Tim Moore, aye.
Unanimous, that makes five. Thank you very much, Joe.
Thank you, everyone.
Hey, do you have a question? I just saw your, your Hollywood square light up.
No, no, no.
Thank you. Okay, very good. Uh, moving right along. Hi, Diane.
Hello, Mr. Chairman.
How you doing?
Fine.
All right, next up, text amendment application for the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission for text amendments related alcohol sales, including amendments to section 203, that's definition of alcohol sales. Section 502, permitted uses in business and industrial zones. Section 504.7, alcohol sales in the HIZ, and 805, general requirements for alcohol sales. The changes requested would move, remove certain distance requirements from the sale of alcohol from other uses such as places of worship, charitable institutions, hospital, convalescent homes, cemeteries, libraries, public playgrounds, or municipal buildings. Attorney Whitney, you, you wanna kind of quickly walk, walk us through this one to the extent necessary?
I have a quick question, Joe. Uh, the HIZ zone no longer exists?
No, no, it, 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 it exists. It exists.
Well, it's gonna be B1? The upper part?
No, the underlying zone is, is, so the HIZ was an overlay zone on top of the B1. The B1 all is, is, it's, it's still, it's, it's a layered approach. The B1's still there.
Okay.
Or B2, whatever, whatever that zone is.
I was just wondering if that makes any diff, any difference as to, uh, some of the limitations or the lack of limitations?
Well, why, why, why don't we let Diane kind of go through it first, and we, we can deliberate and ask the questions?
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, actually, you've already done quite a good summary of, of this. You will recall that, um, you previously approved this change on, uh, April 14th, and the reason it is back today is that there were some perceived deficiencies in the notice for the, that previous approval. So this is really the exact same thing that you approved back on April 14th. Um, you have received, um, a confirmation from CROG that they are still fine with, with this, this change. Um, the reason for the change, change is to correct some inconsistency in the town's current regulations and to ease certain restrictions that no longer seem to make sense, um, and actually contradicted several situations in town that already existed. The changes, as your chairman has said, are to the definitions in section 203, to the notes for permitted uses in section 502. Section 504.7, uses where alcohol sales would be allowed, which include hotels, conference centers, catering establishments, commercial recreation, which includes, but is not limited to casinos and restaurants. And section 805, which specifies that in fact, um, any permission for alcohol sales requires a special permit, no matter what zone it's in. So making this change allows alcohol sales in other places, but it is still subject to your control through the special permit, um, process. It leaves in place a distance requirement from schools and daycare centers. You have previously received a memo from town planner, um, on March 6th about how this, um, would make sense for the town and why it conforms with the plan of conservation and development. That's a, a quick rundown on it, and I'd be happy to answer questions if you have any.
So why don't we go and go around the, uh, the Hollywood squares again. Uh, Dick, you have any questions or concerns?
Uh, no, I don't have any questions at this present time, unless someone else brings something up that I didn't know about.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
I, I feel much more comfortable now. I don't have any questions, any concerns.
Hey, thank you, Frank. Jim?
I'm, I'm all set. I have no, no concerns this time.
Mike?
Yeah, I, I concur that this is something we've already discussed previously, and I, and I think it's just a, uh, procedural thing to, uh, correct some inconsistencies.
Thank you. Ann?
Yeah, I felt like we approved this already, um, so I have no issues.
Marty?
I'm all set with the presentation, and it's just, um, dotting the i's and crossing the t's. That's what it sounds like from previous.
And Tim?
Tim agrees.
Okay, and I agree as well. So I guess we don't have any questions.
Fine.
All right, so this is a public hearing. Are there any comments or concerns or questions from the public? If you're trying to speak, you might be on mute. Okay, I don't see anyone raising their hand in the squares. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing for the text amendment.
Okay, I, I make a motion to close the public hearing on the petition for a text amendment by Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission, requesting text amendments related to alcohol sales, including amendments to section 203, definition of alcohol sales, 502, permitted use in business and industrial districts, 504.7, alcohol sales in the HIZ, and 805, general requirements for alcohol sales.
There's a motion on the table to close the public hearing for the text amendment? Is there a second?
Second.
I think you need to read that whole motion. Oops.
I think so. I agree.
There's something after where you stopped?
I have to read that for the, uh, motion to approve, don't I?
Yeah, for, yeah, to close the public hearing, it's okay to have an abbreviated motion.
Okay.
Yep, for, yep. So we, we have a motion, and we have a second. And I'll consider that discussion. Any other discussion? Here are none. A call for a vote to close the public hearing. Uh, roll call. Joe Willett, aye?
Dick Sullivan, aye.
Jim Thurs, aye.
Mike Kowalski, aye.
Tim Moore, aye.
And that is unanimous. So the public hearing is closed. So will, can someone offer a motion for the text amendment application, the more detailed conditions of approval?
Okay. I make a motion to approve the petition for text amendment by the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission, requesting text amendments related to alcohol sales, including amendments to section 203, definition of alcohol sales, 502, permitted use in business and industrial districts, 504.7, alcohol sales in the HIZ, and 805, general requirements for alcohol sales. In order to make the town regulations more consistent and to remove unnecessary barriers to some businesses in town because the application conforms to the plan of conservation and development for the town of East Windsor and will promote public health and safety. This approval is granted subject to the following conditions, which are one and two on page two, uh, from a, in a memo from Leonard J. Norton, P. Director of Public Works, Town Engineer, dated May 11th, 2020. And it is advised that when considering any applications to amend the zoning regulations and planning and zoning commissions should make the following findings, which should be stated clearly for the record. A, that the amendment requested is complete and contains all required application information. B, that the amendments will promote the public health and safety and general welfare. C, that the amendments are in conformity with the comprehensive plan of the town of East Windsor. D, that the amendments were reviewed by the staff of the Region Planning Commission for the Capital Region Council of Governments, and find no apparent conflicts with regional plans and policies of the concerns of neighboring towns. And E, this application was previously approved on April 14th, 2020, but is approved again on May 12th, 2020.
May I suggest also that you set an effective date for this change of May 30th?
As part of my motion, I propose we make an effective date of this change to be May 30th, 2020.
Thank you.
There's a motion on the table for approval, the text amendment? Is there a second?
Second, Dick Sullivan.
Is there any discussion, comments, concerns?
I hope we got it right this time.
Here or none, have a row call for approval. Those in favor say aye. Joe Willett, aye.
Dick Sullivan, aye.
Jim Thurs, aye.
Mike Kowalski, aye.
Tim Moore, aye.
That's five, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Next up, under new business, LaBrec AutoCraft LLC for site plan review for construction of a new commercial building and automotive repair at 63 Newberry Road. Just for the record, we can't take action on this tonight. This requires a action by the inland wetlands commission, and I think is scheduled for their next meeting, whenever, I'm not sure what the date is. But nonetheless, I think that we can, we've already accepted the application, and perhaps it would be appropriate for us to start deliberating and discussing this, and if there's any comments or anything we could share with the applicant's engineer, it would be helpful for getting a quick swift approval at a future meeting. Eric?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. You're correct about the wetland scheduling so far. We expect to be at the wetlands hearing on June 3rd, so hopefully we can wrap this application with planning and zoning up on June 9th. I'll give you a brief presentation about the project, and then like you mentioned, if any of the commission members have any questions, I'll answer them tonight if I can, and if not, I'll be prepared for the 9th to answer those questions. So, I'm a manager of Gargier Peterson Associates of Tallinn, representing Mike LaBrec of LaBrec AutoCraft, and his business has been at this site for about 20 years. He is an automotive repair business that specializes in the repair of really like classic cars. He does a really nice job. This parcel, 63 Newberry Road, is a two and a half acre parcel located in the M1 manufacturing zone. There is an existing building that, in which he does his repair work, which is located on the left side of the site plan if you're looking at it. That building is served by public water and sewer. And what he's trying to do, he's, you know, his business is doing well, he's trying to expand and construct a new 9,600 square foot building, which is shown on the right side of the site plan. We've submitted floor plans and building elevations along with our site plan. The building is proposed to be a metal building with a stone kicker wall along the south edge, which is the edge that faces Newberry Road, and the westerly edge, which is the edge that, which is the side of the building that faces the existing building. So the kicker wall, that stone, is just a decorative feature to break up the metal building look. His existing building is also a metal building. It is a light blue color, and he's not sure what color he wants to build the new building, but he wants to pick something that'll match the existing building and not be too much of a contrast there. There will be a security fence we're proposing that goes in between the buildings, so, you know, off hours, people will not be able to drive in between the buildings and get to the back of the property. We are proposing exterior lights in the form of wall pack building, and they are located on the front side and also the west side of the building. Pointy lights and nighttime friendly fixtures. In the front of the new building, we're proposing a landscape bed with shrubbery and colorful plantings in there. I can be more specific if you want, and then there'll be a concrete sidewalk and then a parking lot in the front. There is currently a parking lot in the front right portion of the property today. That lot has, Mike tells me, hasn't been filled in 20 years. He'd like to make it smaller, so that's what we're doing. We are reducing the size of that lot, so we have, so we meet the minimum requirements of the zoning regulations as far as parking goes for this use. What that does is that helps us reduce or offset any of the increased impervious coverage that the new building would result in. We are showing a couple of shade trees in front of the parking lot that will help shade and cool the parking. The drainage from the front parking lot is going to be created to runoff in an easterly direction where we'll be building a relatively large sized rain garden, which will help treat the water from the runoff and help with infiltration of that water before it goes in a further easterly direction to a low point on the property, which is a wetland area. There will be room for vehicle storage behind the old building, you know, that's storage of vehicles that they're looking to repair. Part of this project is to kind of clean up the site a little bit, I think by building this new building and getting rid of some of the vehicles that they need to get rid of on site that have been sitting around for too long. This will kind of take care of itself in that way, and any storage of vehicles that will be behind the gate and getting ready to be serviced will, really won't be visible from the street anymore. We will be repaving the entire back portion of the paved parking lot, because right now it's just been, it's kind of breaking apart, and it's not very attractive and not very functional, so we're just going to resurface that by really digging up the old pavement and putting down new. I think this will be a much nicer look to this site, and we, new building will have public water and sewer. There's already a sewer lateral that has been stubbed off from when they put the main in that we're connecting the new building to. We did receive a memo from the WPCA that they are okay with our chin. We're also installing a water separator because there will be a floor drain in the building, and that's all part of that WPCA, I guess you'd call it, approval. And with that, I'll just answer any questions if I can of the commission.
All right, I'll go around the horn here. Do you have any comments or questions for Eric?
Have you read and are you in agreement with the memo from Len Norton dated on the 4/23?
I am, yes, and we are, I meant to bring that up. I have no issue with any of his comments on that memo, we'd be happy to address all of those.
Okay, and I do have a question for you in that the concern of the inland wetlands is exactly what?
To tell you the truth, I wasn't at that meeting, so I don't know. Our expectation was that we do not have any direct impacts to the wetlands, so we thought they were going to just let the staff approve the application. And I guess that didn't happen, so...
I'm sorry, I didn't get the last part.
And that did not happen, so they want to approve it themselves, or at least decide on it themselves, so I do not know what their concerns are at this point.
Okay. All right, Dick, this is Len Norton. I tried to impress upon them that it's really minimal impact of wetlands. There is no work directly in the wetlands. I answered a number of questions regarding the plan, and there is a report from the soil scientist that basically, in my opinion, the proposed plan will have no significant negative effect to the areas from the soil scientist, but they did decide, I'm honestly not sure why, other than because it's a new building, I guess. I tried to get them to have an agent decision, but they chose to have an application, and I'm not sure why, but we're just, no. Okay, and I'm thinking here that, you know, I look at the plan and I see that all of the land to the east is owned by Michael LaBrec, is that true?
That is correct, he does own the next lot to the east, yep. Which that lot, more or less, is all wetlands.
Okay.
Not that we had it delineated, but just walking by, it's pretty wet.
I'm just looking at, you know, I'm looking at when the application was first made, and now we're looking at, you know, quite a ways out that we don't even have a chance to approve this or reject this until sometime in June. I was just wondering if there's some way that we can move this along?
There isn't, the enabling legislation is pretty clear that the, if inland wetlands needs to take action before we can deliberate and take a vote on this one. It can't be subject to another agency's approval.
Gotcha.
So, those events happened beyond our control, outside of the planning zoning purview, it is what it is. You know, it is unfortunate, but... Any other comments, Dick, at this time?
Joe, this is Frank. Good presentation, I think the next meeting should be short for him, and he should be on his way.
Thank you.
Jim, any comments?
Dick stole my question, but I had one other question for Eric. What are nighttime friendly wall packs?
Okay, I'm sorry, so it's a light that is attached to the building as opposed to being attached to a light post, and nighttime friendly means that there's not going to be glare shining up into the sky or onto neighboring properties, it's actually a classification for a light fixture.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mike?
I have a question, this is Marty. Am I jumping on mic? Sorry.
Go ahead, Marty, you got the floor now.
Okay, for Eric, on the drawings, I just wanted to see where they're proposing any kind of oil drums and trash. I don't see a pad for dumpster or any removal of waste oil or any of those greases and fuels and things.
I would have to get back to you about where they store their waste oil.
Okay.
Because it very well may be inside the building, I'm not sure.
Okay, I'm just sure that that's probably going to be, thank you.
Yep.
Mike, any comments, concerns?
Sure, yeah, that was kind of one of the areas I was going with normally. We get on a site plan, the dumpster pad location plus the screening detail. We usually get a cut on what fixture you're using. Sometimes will require a photometric plan, and I don't know if this site would really require, can't really tell how much existing or additional lighting you're putting there, but I think as long as there's nothing going on the backside of the building, we should be okay with not having light leaving the property. Do you have any intention to put signage on the property?
No, there, he has an existing sign out front by his driveway, and if I remember right, he has a sign on his existing building, and he's okay with leaving that just the way it is.
Okay, so no existing sign, okay. I think those were the things that jumped out at me.
Okay, Anne?
Boss, you're up.
No comments.
Okay.
Hey, Mike, just, this is Len, just for Mike, as part of the submission, there was a, it's not on the plan, but there was a cut for the wall mounted light packs, and there is a small photometric diagram with that that came in with the application. I don't know if you all have it, but...
Yeah, I got it, let me.
I do, I don't, I don't see the photometric unless you're referring to other, the general photometric of the fixture itself, not how it applies to the property.
I get it, you're curious as to how it applies on the site plan itself, as to what the...
Correct.
Got you.
We could have that added to a plan submitted before the next meeting if you feel that is necessary.
Eric, I think consistent with other applications, I think it's a, I think that's a detail that should be added. And Tim, any comments?
I have nothing.
Okay, this is Joe, I have a couple questions. On one of the plans, sheet two of three, obviously it shows the proposed building, but to the north of that it says proposed future building. Is that part of the 9,600 square feet approval?
Yes, it is, because he, at the time of the application, he wasn't sure if he was going to go with the larger building or the smaller building, so when we had our initial meeting with the town planner, he said, well, for as far as the zoning application goes, I would suggest you go with the larger building, and if they go into the building permit process with the smaller building, then there should not be an issue with that. So that's how we designed the site plan.
Okay. Also on that same plan, in front of the existing building, there's a concrete sidewalk. And to me, that kind of serves those existing seven spaces, or how many are there now?
Yep.
How are pedestrians going to get between the existing building and the new building? I wouldn't think they're going to use that sidewalk, but I'll let you tackle that. I'm just concerned about pedestrians just wandering in between parked cars, foot traffic between, between the buildings.
Well, I think Mike is going to set up his prop, his his procedures for his customers so that they will go, I think it's, I believe they're going to pick up their vehicles at, I believe it's the new building, so they would be actually parking in front of the new building, and he's going to have the office, that little dashed line in the front left corner of the new building is a little office area, so leave, his customers really going to be, are going to be directed to the new building, and whereas the old building is going to be left for his employees and himself and a bunch of the work, actually. So I don't see, I don't foresee a lot of pedestrian traffic from one building to the other, except for the employees, which will probably be doing that, you know, kind of like in between the buildings behind the fenced area.
Okay. I just got two other comments. One of the plans submitted, it's titled, sheet number A-101, it's a floor plan elevator. I was just doing a quick calculations of the building size dimensions, and I come up with a square footage, something different than what's on the application.
Okay.
I don't know if it's a bad math on my part, or these are just conceptual, or maybe it doesn't reflect, maybe it's, it's the building, not the proposed future building?
Yeah, I believe that is the case with the plans for the A-101 shows the area that doesn't include the proposed, proposed future area, future building area, and that's, that is the difference.
Okay, yeah, because that's what I, that's what I came up with, because that building is 7,200 square feet.
Yep.
Okay, all right. And the last comment, I would echo there, follow commissioners, if there's going to be a dumpster for this new building... Follow commissioners, if there's gonna be a dumpster for this new building, it 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 should be shown on the, well, needs to be shown on the plan, it needs to be landscaped, unless they're gonna use the existing dumpster. And and I don't, I assume that's that's in the rear of the existing building, and I don't know if that's landscaped now.
I will look into that.
I'm not exactly sure how well that's handled. Does anyone else have any comments for Eric to take back? For for the next meeting?
I do not.
My comment would be, is the fire marshal happy with the ability to get to the back of the building and everything like that? Is there any issues with the fire safety?
I have not heard anything from the fire marshal. Lenny, have you heard anything?
I have not.
Has the fire marshal been submitted to plans?
Um honestly, I I don't believe I was acting town planner at the time that these plans came in. Primarily as the town engineer. I can make a note to make sure that, um let's see, Real Workhouse pointed that Rich Austin gets a a set of these, I can contact him and make sure he gets a set, let him know what's going on.
Well, it'd just be nice to get his approval, rather than have it built and say, hey, this is all wrong.
Lenny, let me know if you need me to send him a set or something.
Yes, I'll let you know, Eric, yep.
Thank you.
So Eric, hopefully all goes well next meeting, you should have, you have our preliminary comments. Should be academic, just about moving forward.
I appreciate that.
At a future meeting, yes.
Yeah, I think it was productive and I I appreciate all the comments and and questions you all had, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Take care.
Um we need a motion to continue the public, excuse, not the public hearing, the site plan review for the LeBrack AutoCraft, can someone offer one?
Okay, I make a motion that we continue the public, I'm sorry, the site plan review for LeBrack AutoCraft LLC. For a site plan review of construction of a new commercial building for automotive repairs at sixty-three Newberry Road. Map, uh oh nine three dash seventeen dash oh twenty-four zone in the district M one.
There's a motion to continue the the site plan review. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? You're none have a motion for approval, I, Joe Willett?
I, Dick Sullivan.
Hi, Jim Thurs.
I'm Mike Kowalski.
And did I miss somebody, would I get them all?
I think Tim dropped off.
Tim, are you still there?
Tim's gone to bed.
Anyway, we have a quorum, that's four commissioners in the affirmative. So the the motion is approved.
Tim just came back on.
Oh.
Did I miss a a vote? Phone turned off.
Yes, there was a there was a motion to continue the application for LeBrack to a future meeting and there, and we were taking a vote, yep. What is your vote? You want to agree?
Uh yes.
Okay, so yes, now now it's unanimous. All right, thank you. All right, um. Is Terry on the line? L A D A? Um is the person here regarding the zone, the informal discussion on the Chamberlain zone change? Is that person present for that discussion?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, yep. What I like to do since Evan is here, did I pronounce your first name right, Evan?
Yes, you did.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to go out of order to 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 talk about old business before the the informal discussion prior to the L A D A discussion?
Sure, I make a motion that we take other business out of order of our agenda to discuss prior to our old business L A D A discussion.
There's a motion on the table to go out of order, consider the informal discussion regarding Chamberlain Rhones, Chamberlain Road zone change. Is there a second?
A second?
Any discussion? Call for vote, all who have some favor say aye, roll call, Joe Willett?
Dick Sullivan, aye.
Jim Thurs, aye.
Mike Kowalski, aye.
Tim Moore, aye.
Okay, next up, under one of the items for old business, informal discussion regarding Chamberlain Road zone change. Evan, the floor is yours, you wanna give an overview?
Yeah, this is, you guys are used to this, this is the first one for me.
No problem, take your time.
I'm actually looking at purchasing the property. Um I've gotten a lot of old perk testing and stuff that was done. Um right now, the the property of Butts Levin Chamberlain, which is M one zone. Um I am a, I'm a steel erector, I'm a construction worker. Um I own my own business and what I've been looking for is a piece of property where I could actually build a house and have a shop. Um from what I understand from other properties I've looked at in other towns, I need to be industrial. Because I do steel fabrication, I own a steel erecting business, but I also do steel fabrication. So the property of Butts, um M one zone right now, which is the fertilizer plant, which is on Chamberlain, at the beginning of Chamberlain where a area starts. So I was wondering if it would be possible to get a ten acres changed to um to M one zoning, so that way I would be able to run my business off of my property. And I'm also looking to do about probably a ten thousand square foot building, ten to twelve thousand square feet.
Evan, how tall would this building be if you had a guess?
I have to have, um I would say around twenty-four feet.
Twenty-four feet.
It it could be a little shorter than that. Because inside I would have an overhead crane, I would be installing an overhead crane and then head headroom becomes an issue. So I I think for me to have at least about a twelve foot clearance from the overhead crane to the concrete floor, I think I need to be like the twenty-two feet area right in there. And I already ever sourced about getting three phase power onto the property. Cuz right now, there's, there's nothing on, there's nothing, the telephone poles stopped. Um like three, they stopped right in front of the fertilizer plant, like on their property, there's like a tower there. Like an old metal tower and there's a, that's the last pole on the property. So on before I continue into looking into this property. And and from the old paperwork I have from Northeast Central District Health Department. I have the old perk tests that were done in two thousand eight and it doesn't look good, there was a most of the lot, cuz I, you guys may be familiar, there was a guy, a gentleman that wanted to do like forty something houses on this property at one time back in two thousand eight or nine. Um and a lot of the perk tests came back with disturbed soil. And they're talking possibly up to thirteen feet deep and that was throughout most of the property. So that's my, that's one of my main concerns, but before I can, before I have anything done to it or do anything, I wanna it's not worth it to me unless I can run my business off of my property, it's a forty-nine point something acre parcel. And I'm looking for the ten acres, obviously, to but the fertilizer plant, which is already M one zone. That's pretty much what I'm looking to find out if it's a possibility, because I mean, I haven't made an offer on the property, I haven't, I I just stopped, like without you guys approving anything, it's not really worth me pursuing anymore.
Yeah, no, I understood you're just doing due diligence. I I just got a couple more questions and I'm gonna query the other commissioners to see if they have, they can can help. See, you can get a better sense of what some of our preliminary concerns may be for you to make an informed decision moving forward. Would you consider using the railroad for distribution of these materials, where this is all via truck or delivery trucks?
No, the railroad actually doesn't even touch that property, Herb Holden owns the property between the railroad and this property, from what I understand.
All right, so the railroad's not involved. What type of trucks would you be using for for delivery, same as what your existing business uses?
No, right now, I have F five fifties, which are work trucks, they got welders and stuff on them, cuz I'm a steel erector, I wanna get into the fabrication part of it. So it'd be like, probably like a like a twenty-four foot like flatbed truck, you know what I mean, not not an eighteen wheeler or nothing like that, no, no big rigs going in and out. I mean, the plant rate, the fertilizer plant right next door now has plenty of traffic going in and out of there.
Okay.
And all, oh, also, there there is not, there is no city sewer or water available. I didn't talk to anybody about possibly finding out what the cost would be to extend that down, but um I had heard from somebody that like if I was to do a septic system, I would have to, could only have, they wanted to know how many people would be working in the building. And that would be no more than six. And that's just for bathroom use only, no showers or nothing.
Okay, you answered one of my questions about public utilities. And and the last question I have, or just just for your information, is just quickly looking on our zoning map, the area in question, the ten acres is within the aquifer protection zone. I believe. There's a dot, if you look at the zoning map, I think there's a dotted line that goes around, it it covers a lot of Broadbrook. Anyway, if that's true, it's, it it's just something to consider, because certain uses are restricted within an aquifer protection area. Give you an example like, not not that it can exist. Gas stations, dry cleaners, things of that nature, where it may have an opportunity to contaminate the groundwater, it 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 just another layer of checks and balances. So if in fact the property is within that, those are just additional considerations for you when you, when you make your ultimate decision whether or not to go forward.
Okay. Yes, I I did not see that that map.
Now, um do you have the existing zoning map, do you, do you have a color version of it, it's one, there's one online on the East Windsor Planning and Development website?
Yes, I I have, I have the one that shows the zoning differences, like M one and R three. Um I have that, but I don't have the one that you were talking about, about the quarry thing there.
Yeah, no, it's it's called an aquifer protection zone, aquifer protection. And the map is published online, and I do believe it encompasses the property in question.
Because the only, like, like you're talking about like contamination and stuff like that. There's no oil involved, I mean, maybe this doesn't matter to you right now, but there's no, it's just welding, welding and steel fabrication, you know? There's no.
Yes, it's just an observation, I'm not suggesting that it's an obstacle in any way, it it's just something to be aware of, that's all.
Okay.
Yep. So why don't I, I'm gonna query some other commissioners to see if, or actually all of them, to see if they have any leading questions to help you make an informed decision. Uh Dick, any any questions for Evan?
Uh being familiar with that particular piece of property. Are, were you coming out with bad soil tests even on the high areas?
This was the tests that were done just for perk test in two thousand eight or two thousand nine. That's what I, Marilyn Desen is the listing agent for the property. She gave me everything she had on it, because there was the guy had had like, uh, I don't know, had to be like thirty tests done on the property. And they all came back saying that disturbed soil.
Dick, I believe the perk tests were, are made for septic systems.
Right. But they also referred to disturbed soil, I don't know if you can, I don't think you can build a building on disturbed soil. I I wouldn't think you'd put a footing on disturbed soil, it's not I mean, I'm not a builder, you know, I put buildings up, but I'm not a builder.
I have, I have a question for Dick and probably Lenny, if he's still around. Do we have a town planner and 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 an office now? And if we do, shouldn't many of these questions or all these questions first presented to him and then our town planner who's familiar with the area and knows the regulations, not that we don't, but he might know some, something that we don't know, can answer his questions?
Well, Frank, I'm gonna jump in here. There, right now, as you, as you heard a previous, Ruben is unavailable. We don't have anyone, Lenny is temporarily acting in that capacity. And a request was made through Lenny to have this conversation through this commission. So it has been vetted somewhat internally. I I spent some time going through the regulations myself, I am not a certified town planner either. So unfortunately, based on the staffing situation, we we we're kind of have to do this ourselves.
Okay, okay, I didn't, I didn't realize all this had taken place previously, thank you, Joe.
Yes, Marilyn actually had called Len, Len Norton and asked him what he thought, because I believe the the woman that's in charge of zoning is is out on maybe maternity leave or something, or something along that lines. So she had talked to him and he said, the best thing I could do would be to go on to this meeting. That's why I'm here, because he suggested to do it.
Uh Dick, any other questions, comments at this time?
No, I but that answers a question that I always had as to why all those perk tests were done and then nothing happened.
Okay.
From what Marilyn Desen says, he wanted to do forty something houses and the town would only let him do like in the thirty, like that, so I don't know if it worked out, but but all the perk, almost every perk test that was done from what I have on the paperwork that I received were, couldn't be conducted or basically disturbed soil.
They didn't pass, they didn't pass.
Yeah.
Maybe Peg can help us, cuz Peg's, you know, Peg's been at all these meetings. Peg, do you have any recollection of any of this?
I think part of the problem, Frank, was this was an old gravel pit some years ago, back in the fifties, I think actually gravel was taken from that area to nine ninety-one. And I think perhaps too much soil was taken. So you run into the same problem that you don't have the top soil left to do the septic systems.
And that's probably why you have the undisturbed soil.
Yeah, I've been trying to find out what went on, cuz you don't know what people, it was a tree farm for like a long time. And who knows, I, you don't know what's property, you know? By Richard Sullivan, he said right from the get-go, he was familiar with the property, so that's nice to know that somebody's still around. Maybe knows what happened, you know?
Uh thi- this is Len. The reason, the disturbed soil generally means in this case, the the disturbed soil means that they removed a tremendous amount of gravel. Whether it was to build ninety-one or what have you, this is an old, the old Norton gravel pit from years ago. And there's, they've removed soil, a lot of times what they'll do when they remove gravel is they're regrading, they may put some other material in in place of the gravel they removed, so it's, it's, it's it's disturbed in several ways, it's it's removed, so it's disturbed down to a certain layer. And then in some, some areas, as you know, in gravel pits, they tend to move soil around when they're working, you get to find the the better veins of what they're trying to get rid of. And and that's why I'm sure that, and it was, I think it was Regine Jacques, uh the gentleman that did Norton Glen, that wanted to do a subdivision in here. And he did do a number of test pits. But determined that there, you know, for what he was trying to do, it just wasn't feasible. Now, whether or not you could put up one building with a septic system for six people in a, in a single family house, that may be quite doable, but there'd need to be new soil testing done.
So do you think like a lot of material would need to be removed in order for a septic system to work properly and like new stuff brought in?
No, generally you don't remove material that, I mean, there are filled systems, but it, but out there, you it, again, it would, the area would, I No, generally you don't remove material that, I mean, there are filled systems, but it, but out there you, it, again, it would, the area would, I haven't walked that property in quite some time. It would, it would, wherever you decided you wanted to put your house or put your building, that, those particular areas would have to be investigated. Um, some test pits done, some topography done, and determine where you would have area, and you may not get to put your house where you want to put it. The, the location of your house may be, you know, dictated by where the soils are or that you can get a septic system.
Right. Okay.
Jim, comments?
Yeah, um, I'm thrilled you picked East Windsor to try to put your business in and move to town. The, the issues I have are, there's a lot of people who would love to run their business out of their house and their property. They can't. The town has a big issue with that going on right now. I know a few people on Wells Road who would love to stick a big building up back to their property, but can't run the wrong zone. I understand that you, but the fertilizer plant, but that fertilizer plant's kind of been grandfathered in there. It's actually on the wrong side of town. All the, all the business is on the other side of town, and that's in the M one zone over there because it's been there forever, probably grandfathered in. So I wasn't really a fan of trying to run the business out of that property.
Thank you. Mike, comments?
Um, yeah, I was just kind of looking this thing over. Are you, so you're proposing to obtain the entire fifty acre property? And then segregate off ten acres of it into an M one zone?
Yes.
And and the house would stay in the R two zone kind of separate of this uh, re-subdivision. So I mean, putting a house in the R two should not be an issue. It's a question of if, if this is a viable piece of property. I mean, I, I, I think you've got more obstacles with the property itself than than with what the, what the zoning is here. That's all I guess.
Ian, comments, questions? You're trying to speak, you're on mute?
Yeah, I was trying to find the unmute. Um, I wonder in that area, what the groundwater would be like given the land use? If you're going to need a private well?
That's a good question.
I, I'm not sure, being next to the fertilizer plant, I'd want to drink the groundwater.
Yeah, yeah, didn't really think about that.
It may be fine, but I, I just don't know.
Okay, Marty?
What happens in a situation like that if that fertilizer plant had leaked and contaminated that property? Who's responsible if, 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 if they were the cause of that and that that was the case, who would be responsible for taking care of that?
You'd have to prove it was from there. And um, there's been agricultural and other uses, so the
Yeah.
There, I'm not sure you could even prove it's from there.
Right.
Take a lot of money to do that.
Yeah.
But I, before I put a house there, I think about potable water too.
Yeah.
Marty, yep.
Um, I'm, I'm agreeing with a lot of the comments that have been made. I've just, do your due, Evan, just do your due diligence. Um, you know, to find out what's what there.
Yeah.
And Tim?
I, I guess I'm, I'm a little different than the others. I think it's a perfect spot for what you're talking about. There's already some other shops on that side of town. I live on that side of town and pretty familiar with the area. I know there's that piece that Zen has listed, and there's another hundred acres diagonal across the intersection on Windsorville, and I think those are both filled back in uh, a long time ago. And you know, we had a project in Windsor where we built on some fill clay and they dug down and they did some compaction testing. It was fine to build. Uh, I think they dug the, here's a little deeper, but I don't think you'd really have a problem with building a building and if, with a house, if you backfilled it correctly, you probably would have all right drainage. But I do think that they filled that with clay from what people alive and told me. And as far as the groundwater, we have a well milled on the road. A lot of the wells in Broadbrook are considered contaminated. Uh, not so much now, but they were before, and they couldn't really pinpoint. Uh, I have two houses that both have the uh, EBTs or something. And we have a carbon filter in the basement just in case, but our water's fine now. And uh, the contamination seemed to, they weren't sure if it came in an aqua or a, doesn't matter, it should be, should be able to get good water there in my mind. And as far as the M one zone, I think it's kind of fitting there. There's only big buildings for crop production and it doesn't sound like something you'd really increase the traffic in that area. But that's all I got.
Evan, this is Frank.
Yeah.
I would, I would say, you know, obviously it's your dream and I'd say pursue it and uh, I, I think, you know, I think if you do due diligence, you can get what you want. Just, just don't be too hasty.
Yeah, okay, okay. Thank you.
I, I think it's a good, good use for the property. I don't think a subdivision would work out there, but I think a house and building would be fine.
So Evan, we're offering some informal comments for you to take into consideration as you, as you make your next business decision. Whether or not you want to invest some money in engineering a firm to do, do a little more digging, if you will. But I haven't heard any like showstoppers to say, there's no way in heck that we would even entertain something like that. Uh, it, I, I'm, I'm looking at the regulations in M one. That's why I asked you how high the building is and it certainly certainly fits with, within the lot requirements, the height of the building, all that's permissible. And um, it doesn't appear to be a huge stress on the infrastructure regarding the roadway network and things of that nature. So as far as a zone change concern, it, it, it's plausible. So I, you can't construe that as an approval, but like you said, there's no major obstacles that that we can, that are brought to our attention at this time.
Okay.
So hopefully we've given you some additional information for you to think about as you decide what to do next. And certainly I think it would be worthy to uh, spend some time talking to a civil engineer regarding the site.
Yeah, I will. And I appreciate everybody for their time. I've learned a lot about the property more than a more than in the last fifteen minutes talking to you guys. It's uh, it's helped out a lot, believe me.
Does anyone have any final comments for Evan that we haven't already talked about?
As far as usable land or structurally sound, look for the oldest trees.
That's the problem. All the flat land on that property, it's all flat until you get up.
That's the real disturbed land.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, it was a tree farm. They did whatever, you know, they plowed it and down flat and put trees on there, but I, I never knew it was a gravel pit. I talked to a couple of other people that are a little familiar in town. Uh, I mean, I'm in Ellington. Um, I got a beautiful house. I don't want to move, but I can't even find a property, you know, reasonably priced for industrial property that I could even make something happen. And uh, I don't want to move, believe me, I don't. I, I love my house. Um, I, I got a pretty nice setup here, but I just want to grow and I want to get bigger and I can't do it here.
Okay, Evan, I guess, I guess that's really all we have for you and I, I, I wish you the best.
All right, Joe, very much, guys. I appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Okay, bye.
Have a good night now.
Thank you.
You too.
Um, uh, next up, um, our general business meeting, general zoning issues. You know, we had a discussion last time about um, what has or has not been done. And we're gonna allow Lenny and Joe an opportunity to kind of do some investigations. Is that something that you gentlemen are prepared to talk about, or you want to kick that discussion to another meeting?
Joe, Joe is here with me, as you can see, and Joe has been working very diligently on that, and he's going to update you.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody.
Hey, Joe.
So, we can start with uh, I've got plenty of things I've looked at and I'll just start down my list and um, if you have any questions, just shout out, I'll stop. Um, well, we'll start right at forty-seven Church Street. I did a site visit and noticed that um, there was a lot of debris and one vehicle still there. Currently, he's picked up some of the stuff. I spoke to him today. Uh, he assures me that the rest of it will be out of there by the end of the week. I believe he has sold the property and I think he's being forced to clean it off. It would be my recommendation that if in fact it's not done by the end of the month, then I think we uh, we have to move forward with um, the next step with the fines that um, I believe we're already back in two thousand nineteen. Um, he's already been approached with that, so I think maybe we just have to enforce that. That would be my recommendation with that site. Um, it, it has made leaps and bounds. Um, it does look a lot better, but it's still needs probably a couple of days worth of work there and it'll be done with the removal of the last vehicle.
Progress is good.
Well, we're, we're trying. I, I mean, I'm basically looking at everything like uh, this is, you know, this is the first time. So I'm trying to give some people the benefit of the doubt. And as you can see, when we go down farther the list, it's been working. With this case, um, I, I actually spoke to him and then texted with him today. And um, you know, assured him that it needs to be taken care of as soon as possible. And he seems to um, he seems to be very receptive to it, so.
Joe, um, I, I, I think that your recommendation's very sound. Um, you know, we're, we're, we're in the middle of the month now, another two weeks. To me, I, I, I think let, let nature take its course here and see if he's going to hold up the gentleman's agreement with you before the town considers additional action. I, I, I think that's a sound recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
In, in my opinion, I don't think we should push it. I think two weeks is, is, is reasonable.
Well, I believe he's, he, he feels he's dealing with somebody that isn't going to, going to be pushed around and that's going to be, it's been the, you know, the line was drawn in the sand and I, most of the people that I did speak to and some of them I did not and but I I believe most of them know there might be a new sheriff in town.
It helps to bring Ed DiMarco with you too, right?
Yeah.
Okay, you have next one on your list?
Okay, the next one on my list is um, it's actually a combination of um, thirty, thirty-eight and forty Pleasant Street. Owned by two separate people, but they um, they, they are family members. Um, this site and my site visits and actually several site visits, and every time I go by, I notice more and more um, has an, a few unregistered vehicles, farm animals and a lot of debris. Um, so, and it's, it's not very appealing. I feel bad. Um, we did get a call last week from one of the residents or maybe an email from a resident down the street. So it would be my recommendation on this one is we just, I think it's going to be a difficult challenge, but I think we need to just hit them with a letter with fines instantly, not a letter to clean up it or else I think it needs to be a real harsh hit because um, I, I believe this is going to be one of our difficult ones. I think it'll, it could be more difficult than Church Street.
Joe, do you know if any letters have ever been sent to the property owners in the past on this one?
I don't think so. And from what I can see, I don't really, I think it might have this, I don't know how old this particular one is. I didn't find much records um, in the planning office. I, I don't know their filing system and all their, you know, the way they do things. So and it, to me, it was more difficult trying to find stuff there than it was for me just to give up with what they had and I'm starting scratch, you know, basically fresh with everything.
So this, this is Jason. If I could just chime in on this one, I've gotten two complaints about these two properties to my office uh, in the last two to two and a half weeks. Um, one from a town official and one from a resident who had very specific concerns about sites, smells and sounds. Um, and Joe and I went out on Saturday and took a look at this place and it is, there is, there is a lot of work to be done here. This is a, and I have the suspicion, people who are reluctant to um, take any corrective action to Joe's point. Uh, take corrective action without a little bit of a stick. I don't think the carrot's going to do it. Um, they have a pig on their front step that is gotta be three hundred and fifty pounds. It is a monster animal. And that's probably the most manageable problem that they have. Charlie's laughing, but he knows it's true. He lives in smelling distance of that pig.
I love pigs, I love pigs.
And quite honestly, it, it, thirty-eight is not much worse than it's been for a very long time and Charlie probably can agree. It's, it's, it, it's a rough, it's a rough situation there anyways, so I, ultimately, I think we're probably going to have to get attorneys involved in everything. I don't see them very willing to just clean up and comply.
Well, Joe, your recommendation of issuing a letter with the stating the, the, the ordinance, I, I think it's appropriate course of action because it doesn't appear that you're going to get voluntary compliance without the stick.
All right, moving on to sixty-four Main Street in Broadbrook, I'm happy to say that this case could be closed. Um, this was something I believe Judy was working on with them. Uh, and they have gotten rid of the unregistered vehicle. They've cleaned up the side and all the, he's moved his tractors and all his paraphernalia to the back and I, I went by today. And it, it's, it's acceptable. I mean, I would just close the case and we can monitor it, but he's complied to everything that he's been asked to do.
All right, I consider that a success story.
Mm-hmm. Then we go to three Broadbrook Road. And from what I can gather from three Broadbrook Road, it was a um, a complaint about the location of the shed. And talking with Ann, or it might have been a compliance with the shed, but Rand, Rand assured me that um, this was more of a um, it's a rear lot, so the, the complaint really didn't apply because the rear lot is not subject to front lot, like I, I believe the shed was somewhat in the front yard of the rear lot, which is in the rear. So, talking with Rand, I believe the planning department just came to the conclusion that there was really no, no issue here. So, I didn't know how far to dig into it. Um, I don't believe any letters went out or anything. I just think it was just more of an informal discussion.
Is there a formal complaint that we need to get the back to somebody that we looked into it? No?
Again, until somebody in that office comes back. Uh, but you know, I mean, as far as a building inspector was concerned, he, he had no issues with the shed. It was a, I believe a clutter farm shed and the location was on the side yard, but technically if you look down the driveway, you see it, so it looks like it's in the front yard. I just think it was just a, maybe um, you know, a misunderstanding type thing. But I mean, I'll leave it, I can leave it rolling on my list for the, the future person doing this, or maybe Ruben can answer some questions when he gets back.
Fair enough.
So then we go to ten and ten dash fourteen Craftsman Road is um, down in the industrial park where the U, UIW, UAIW is building a building. I'm happy to say that after some emails, they've really stopped dragging the mud and, and into the road and today, they actually started to put the binder down. They've got the binder down on the parking lot. For the last two weeks, the place has been perfect. They've really, we've caught them cleaning the anti-track pad. They've really done a good job with just a simple email.
Excellent.
So that I would consider probably other than, you know, somewhat of an enforcement, site enforcement, but they're wrapping it up pretty good there. So that I would consider probably other than, you know, somewhat of an enforcement, but they're wrapping it up pretty good there, right? I see there's gonna start probably landscaping within the next few weeks and hopefully open up and get people in there. Then we move to um, Reservoir Road eighty five eighty seven. It's two lots right on Reservoir. Um, this has been a problem, I think, since the beginning. The lack of erosion control and the lack of an anti-track pad, some discussion was some discussion went back and forth, I believe, with the planning department about wood chips and the use of wood chips and um, the, the pros and cons of wood chips as far as being an anti-track pad, which ended up um, the guy had to put a stone track pad in in the first lot that he's working on. Uh, but my problem with him and I had, I've had a second conversation with him today is the fact that the track pad's in, but the contractors are using the dirt part to drive in and out, not the track pad. So I asked him to put some sort of obstruction or silt fence, something up. I required him to put silt fence around the edges and, and basically candy cane it in because he was told the, the wood chips were acceptable erosion control. I guess they're acceptable in some situations in my eyes, but down by the street, they put silt fence in. So I had a conversation with him today. He's looking to start the other lot. I made it crystal clear that if they don't stop driving on the mud, he's going to have to increase his track pad to the whole width of what he's got boxed out and he needs to put silt fence in. So I will give him until the end of the week. I know he's looking for his other permit. Lenny, and I think this is where it's gonna help with a lot of this enforcement is we need to get more um, more inter-office communications between planning and um, you know, engineering. That um, it's contingency to silt fence being installed before his, the permit and everything is allowed to get his building permit. So that's something we need to work on and we can, I can talk about that later with some other stuff, but I'm giving him until the end of the week to get the silt fence and if not, then I think we're gonna jump right to the next step, which will be a cease and desist because he's been worn so, this is an ongoing thing and he is a builder that's built plenty of homes in this town and um, wants to build more, so I think he's just has to learn to comply with the rules. We have rules. Um, then we can talk about twelve Griffin Road. Uh, the complaint come in is um, it was site work, unpermitted site work, which isn't the case. The case is, is it was land clearing. The gentleman purchased the land. It's where the old Barbara Hill, Barbara Hill School was. And um, he's clearing it. He's actually plowing it. I, I believe he's gonna plant some crops and he, he owns the house next door. I think there's some farm animal issues that, that he's moving over there and, and I checked the drainage ditches. I walked the property, all the drainage ditches for all the new houses on the top of Barbara Hill. It's all clean. No erosion went in there. He basically made the place look a thousand percent better than what it did. If anybody were familiar with what it looked like, it was just all overgrown scrub and that, as Public Works, we had a problem with the trees falling on the, the house that bordered the Barbara Hill School property. He's cleaned all that up. The neighbors are static. I talked to her when I was out there. They're happy, so I don't know where the complaint originally came from. I don't know who complained. But there is no heavy equipment. There is no excavation. Basically all land clearing. Then we can talk about Meadow Farms and Farms Road. If you all haven't seen it, the paving is completed. Farms Road and Meadow Farms is paved. Currently working with contractor to clean up and finish up the detention basin area and we have some drainage catch basins that need to be parched up. We've got some sink holes from the lack of them not being done. So I'm working with that contractor. I hope to be all closed and done by July first with that whole project. Depending on schedule and rain and it, it's spring, so all, everybody's trying to work. It may go a little farther, but my, my goal is July first to close the whole project out.
Hey Joe, have you had any correspondence or collaboration with the homeowners association to keep them informed of uh, progress? Obviously, they can look out their window and see a lot of the hard work that's ongoing, but are they aware of?
Yeah, yeah. Lenny, Lenny's been emailing back and forth. They're, they're very happy with the paving. We have a little curbing in there we're gonna fix for them, but after that, we're pretty much done with the homeowners. It's, it's now all the town side. It's the drainage. It's a detention basin that's in the back, but the homeowners are ecstatic. We have one small issue with a gas, a gas cover got paved over, so the paving company's working on that now to locate it and so actually they're, they're, they're supposed to meet the gas company sometime this week out there and we'll get that squared away, but other than that, the homeowners association is happy with our, the, what's been done for them. So I move on to um, this complaint came from two seventy seven North Road, which is the mansions, but it regarding fourteen Yaski. And uh, I brought Jason out there and we, the other day and I verified, it took me a while to find the concern, but I verified the concern um, on the back of fourteen, about nine hundred feet off the road in the back where if you all didn't know George Yaski, he, George was a collector. He collected things. Um, there is a couple, couple old pickup trucks way in the backwoods and a couple, I would say there were probably boxes off of uh, trucks that he used for storage. Uh, the complaint is uh, the people from the, somebody living in one of the apartments can see this. Um, I, I really don't, I mean, they're unregistered vehicles. I know how to handle the unregistered vehicles. We can send a letter and tell them they have unregistered vehicles and they have to be um, you know, enclosed and I, I read the regulation on that. The containers, I don't, I mean, they're ten feet off the property. I, I guess I'm looking for recommendations from the board. Where do we go? I mean, this stuff is deep in the woods. And it's on their property, but it's, I mean, it's deep. It, it's an old farm. It's, you know, it, there's a a piece of a tractor back there. There's a couple frames and I don't know if they're trailer frames. You know, of course, I didn't go on the property. I didn't have permission to go, but I was on the mansion's property and you can see it. I mean, it, they're difficult to see. You know, I mean, I, I guess maybe some advice on what path to go with this one would be good.
I'd say it's grandfathered.
Did you say they were on the mansion's property or on Yaski's property?
No, no, they're on, they're on the Yaski property. They're they're
I don't see any problem with that.
Is, is it feasible to provide any kind of screening?
It, it's, it's heavy in the pines. Um, if it's ten feet off the, I mean, I, I, I need to do a little investigation on the property line. I don't wanna have to have anybody go out and hire surveyors. I tried to pull the plants today. I could not find them and I did not ask Len yet. Um, I mean, I, could they screen it? Yeah, we could, we could recommend screening. If, you know, I mean, it
Joe.
Yes.
Isn't it, isn't it renter beware? I mean, when you rent a place, you look out your back window and if you don't like the site, you don't rent it. And if it's not, you know, if it's, if it's on someone's property, which you're allowed to have it, what's the problem? I don't, I, I, I don't know if there's a big problem here.
I think a screen would be on the renters, not on the property.
Well, I um, I have not contacted anybody there because it's kind of been, this was one of my ones where I, you know, I mean, I agree. I mean, it, don't look. I mean, it, it's somebody else's property. It is a farm. It's apparent. It's a farm. You know, they're not farming it now. I think they just hay it. The, the stuff has been there. There's trees growing up. The stuff has been there for quite a few years.
I guess it comes to the question, is there really a zoning violation?
Maybe the vehicles?
Well, that, that's my question. What's, what is the, what is the problem? What is the violation? What, 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 what's, what's the problem?
Someone doesn't like what they see out their window.
Right. That is exactly true.
It, it's too bad if there's not a violation. I think that maybe a compromise, maybe uh, inquire about the unregistered vehicles and what the purpose of those might be.
Okay.
I, I think there's a mechanism for that. But I don't know if you really should push it beyond that if there's no obvious zoning um, violations.
I, I mean, we have such major more, you know, bigger problems or bigger, you know, bigger fish to fry than that one, Joe, in my opinion.
Well, I'll um, I'll try to reach out to them and talk to them about maybe some screening and and let them know that their neighbors aren't happy with them.
That sounds very reasonable.
That's more, that's more than reasonable.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then we can move to twenty North Road, which is uh, Calamar. Um, again, I've got good news. I reached out to him and was concerned about the silt fence and uh, the erosion going into the basins. Within a day, he immediately went out, fixed all the silt fence that was down and um, is addressing the erosion in the detention basins that are in the front. The, the, they've got somewhat of, most of the sides stabilized, but more so to where the water's draining off, where, where the water's draining off from where they're doing all the construction work and driving all the lulls. So I recommended some more stone there to him and, and um, he, he was very very Johnny on the spot, I guess you could say, to take care of whatever issue I had. So, which I was quite shocked, but they jumped right on it. And the same, I can say the same for West River Farms. They started a new house out there and I um, we've had a lot of erosion issues out there. You all are aware of. Um, again, they were a simple email and they took care of the problem within two days. Told me it'd be done before the weekend and it was. So then I, um, we had a, an issue on Aspen, twelve Aspen. Uh, we've got a lady that's got a lot of water in her backyard and I actually, Len and I went out there and we um, need to contact the people that own the property and see if we can get them to do a little bit rig grading. The, there's a lot of the water's just running from their property right onto, right onto this other property and for some reason there's a big swale and it's holding a lot of water with thirty feet away. There's a detention basin. I think we might be able, just to get them to massage the land a little and just get that water to drain. So we're working on that one. I just have to reach out to the um, property owner.
Joe, is this new construction?
Nope, this house has been there, but um, ten is new construction and he's gonna have the same issue because it backs this piece of property in the water instead. It, you know, it, it's, it's a very simple fix. So we just have to reach out to the people and see if they'll comply. If not, then we'll have to go next step, but Len assures me there, they'll comply. Um, then we'll go to the, the, the thorn in everybody's side here, uh, thirty four Harrington Road. All right. I believe, I concur, he is running a business out of the yard. I don't need to set up spy cameras or nothing. I've been by there several times throughout the day. He's definitely running an automotive repair out of there. My recommendation is a cease and desist immediately with fines, with whatever shortest grace period I can put on there and um, copy in the Department of Motor Vehicle and see if they'll, they'll take this bone and run with it. But it's apparent he's operating in a residential area. He's running a business. Repair shop on top of it.
Joe, as uh, it's obvious he's running a, a automotive business now. Could Stan go in there and see if he's contaminated the soil, if he's had drains in his, his, his garage, his bays? And in fact, if he's contaminated the soil, you'll have to get, you know, get it fixed.
Well, that would be, I, I don't know. I mean, I guess we would have to really consult with the lawyers and stuff and um, I don't know what our rights are to go in there unless we can apparently see something. Um, he, I mean, he's, he's been there a while. And I mean, is he washing engines? I mean, he's not doing it in the front yard. I believe right behind his house, he has a pool, so I don't know if he's really contaminating or, you know, I mean, no, I mean.
If you're working on engines or transmissions or, or just draining, changing somebody's oil, you're gonna get some spillage. And if you're doing the amount of business he's doing, which is a lot, and Jim Thurs can verify this, he's doing a tremendous business.
Well, well, I, I think, I think our bonus is to try to get him to stop it. If we can get motor vehicle to bite. I mean, that, you know, I mean, I think if we copy in somebody from the DMV, I mean, we can, we can think about copying somebody in from deep, but that's an allegation we can't prove. I would tread lightly on that one.
There's always a tax department.
Well, yeah, but yeah, I mean, there, there's unregistered vehicles there, but they're gone in a day. He's obviously working for a, a dealer or something also because cars are in and out with no plates on them and the next day they're gone. The vehicles are rotating. It's not like it's the same vehicle. It's not, you know, like, okay, maybe he bought something, he's fixing it up and he's selling it. It's I grew up in a car business. I know damn well what he's doing.
Joe, it seems like the steps that you wanna take are, are, are reasonable. I, I guess my, my question is for Jason is um, is the town willing to uh, stay the course, which uh, very likely could involve uh, the, the town attorneys if they, if it goes down, if it gets ugly?
Well, yeah, I mean, the philosophy that I've tried to um, install in town staff since I took office was that um, we're a customer service industry and so we need to be focusing on those customers, but I think part of that has to do with making sure that, that all customers are, are adhering to the same set of principles and guidelines and not just with thirty four Harrington Road, but with all these, these things that Joe has, I think, done an excellent job of following through on over the last couple of weeks. There are multiple examples of, of people who are trying to get away with stuff thinking that nobody's and it has an adverse impact on the aesthetics of the community. It has an adverse impact on abutting property owners. It has an adverse impact on the way we look in general. So this is where we need to go. We need to take a more aggressive stance in terms of enforcing the regulations that you all set. I don't think that in every case, at, in every time you, you bring down the hammer as hard as you can, but I think that Joe's kind of done a, a nice job of outlining those areas where it is appropriate to work with somebody and those areas where it is appropriate to, to bring the thunder and I, I, I'm very comfortable doing that.
Jason, that's refreshing to hear because that hasn't been true in past administrations. They kind of didn't wanna go down the, the legal route for, for finance reasons, maybe for other reasons as well. But uh, I'm glad to hear it.
Happy to do it. Joe, Joe and Len have done just, I, I can't express the gratitude I have for the work that they've done over the, the time they've been filling in. They're working a ton of hours and they're, they're learning as they're going and there's gonna be some bumps in the road, but they're doing a great job and we're happy to have.
They've, they've done more in the last two weeks than's been done in the last two years.
I agree.
It's the truth.
And that's, and that's the truth.
Joe, you shouldn't be so proficient at this new job responsibilities. You may, you
I know. My lawyers made it crystal clear to select my Bowser. Well, let's move on before, you know, it really gets ugly. Seventy, seventy three Miller Road. I got a complaint of illegal burying of materials. Um, I could not bear, well, or middle, I'm sorry, Middle Road, Middle Road. Uh, I could not we have some pictures from a back porch showing a bulldozer operating in the backyard. Uh, I was fortunate enough on Saturday to to get up in there and see the pile of material that's left is, is a lot of wood, log debris, but there's also mattresses and, and, and other debris in it that um, that if gets buried is definitely illegal burying. But I can't verify and I don't know for sure what's been buried so far. But I can't verify and I don't know for sure what's been buried so far. That being said, I also don't know what our rights are to just peel in there with an excavator and dig a test hole. Uh, the third is, is the properties currently owned now, it's not owned by the person living there anymore. It's owned by a mortgage company that is in Washington State, uh, represented by a lawyer that got an address for, but not a phone number yet out of New York. So I'm not a hundred percent sure where to go with this. I have good pictures of what's sitting there. If all of a sudden that gets buried, then I can prove he's burying stuff that shouldn't be buried. You know, propane tanks, plastic mattresses, you know, but I don't know if it's illegal to bury wood. Why you would want to, I don't know, but still, that's where I'm at with that one. Again, is, I, I think maybe just some more monitoring of the property may help us determine what our next step is, unless you all think I should just go right again to the town attorney and get, you know, okay, what is our rights? I don't think we have the right to go. I mean, that's accusing somebody of something we can't verify. I mean, if, if I was the neighbor, I think if I lived behind him, I'd be happy he's done what he's done because prior to this, this was another house that had a lot of stuff.
Joe, my, my advice is just to continue modern. That seems like a, um, conservative approach. You're still being proactive.
Yep. Okay. Um, uh, 140 Whopping Road, which is the Whopping Sand and Gravel Pit down at the end of Whopping. I got a noise complaint and then vehicles are using Morris Road. Um, the, there's a resident on Morris. Actually, there's two residents that are not happy with the gravel pit. I've been up in that gravel pit. It is probably one of the most impressive organized gravel pits I've ever been in. Between the piles, the signage, they've got a state of the art, um, screening plant that we could have this conversation in front of while it's running. It's so quiet. I'm not sure. They do not have any big vibratory rollers. Um, they've welcomed me in with open arms. I've been up and down in there. Uh, done several site visits. I did recommend that he would talk to the dump truck drivers to try to avoid using Morris Road. Legally, we cannot tell somebody they can't drive on a road. So I just asked him if he could do out of courtesy because for the neighbors and everything. And he assured me he would take care of it. Um, I've been out there. I was out there twice this week, driving by, rolled the window down. I cannot verify any of the noise complaints or the vibration. So, um, I will just keep this on my list and just monitor it until something comes up I can verify.
Joe, just something else to consider. The town does have a, a mechanism to, uh, post a weight restrictions on, on any road, but that also could preclude bust, uh, school buses, public works vehicles, fire trucks, moving trucks. So it's a double edged sword. You can't exclude, legally exclude some vehicles and not others.
Well, and.
It, it's been done in some towns and it can, it, it does withstand the legal challenge.
And quite honestly, and, and, and Dick probably can agree with me, if you're, if you're driving an 80,000 pound vehicle, you do not want to come down a, a 10% graded hill and try to stop 300 feet down the hill. It, it's a terrible way to come. I believe the one truck was lost. And I think he was, he, he, he missed Griffin Road or he missed, he missed Whopping Road in South Windsor and went all the way down and hit Graham, and then his GPS corrected him at Morris. The only conclusion I can come, come to. So, I mean, it's, it's a terrible situation. It's a, I don't know if I'm going to be able to stop coming down that hill. It's pretty steep. So he was very, I mean, I've talked to two people out there, the foreman, and he, he was very, very happy to speak to the drivers as they come in and even post a sign if you want, you know. We can't tell them they can't use the road, but I, I think that problem should be solved. The noise issue, I, I think it's a pit. It's, y'all allowed it to be there. It's, there's one right next door. There's one next door to that. So, and they've always been there. Um, 131 North Road. This is another one I, I think I should go down the same line as with, um, with Pleasant Street. This is a yard that if you go back all the way to 2009, they've had quite a bit of unregistered vehicles and, and I have no idea what they're doing back there. I don't know if they're fixing vehicles. I don't know if they're just collecting vehicles, but there's got to be 30, at least 30 vehicles, maybe even more. And there's a camper set up in the back. I can't quite verify anybody. I have yet to see anybody come out with coffee or sit in front of it. I can't verify somebody's living in it, but I just, it just looks like someone's living in it.
Is this the property next to the, uh, the dog training facility? Okay.
Yes. And it's, it's, it's terrible. It's, it, it's everywhere. It's, and they're unregistered. Right there is, is my letter I want to send to them. Remove the unregistered vehicles within 30 days or will, um, you know, a fine of $150 per day will. I don't know where we're going to go. I think this is going to be another battle. I don't. I've, I've lived in this town. I've worked in this town my whole working life and that place has always been the same. It's another place that these people just, that's what they, that's how they live. But it's, it's out of control. I mean, a couple of vehicles is one thing, but it's, it's definitely out of control there.
It's also a working farm. I see chickens running around the front yard too.
Well, it's quite a prudent land. It's, I think they're 17 or, it's a big hunk of land. It used to be one big farm at one time. So the, my recommendation would be to, to hit them with the same letter that you need to clean it up. You need to get rid of the vehicles. And if not, then we're going to have to move forward.
Just, uh, just, this is Frank, just as a sideline. I went by there. I don't know. I think it was last week. And there was a goat. There was a goat standing up on top of one of the cars.
So, um, there was a couple more that people have taken care of. We had one Rockville Road had some couch and stuff. That's all taken care of. Um, and I got a phone call today about a couple of new ones. Um, the building official informed me that he thinks there's a, somebody living in a camper uh, behind Dempsey, on Dempsey Road, way up in the back and apparently, um, there's a bunch of unregistered vehicles up there on the property. There's a, I guess there's a, some sort of a big shop back there. I looked at it quick on the GIS. I did not drive back there today. I really didn't want to open up another can of worms until I got some of the other stuff closed out. But I wanted to make you aware of it. It's on our radar now. It, it's an official complaint. So I will have a good idea of what we can do and what's up there for your next meeting. Um, but, um, Napoleon, I don't know how to break this to you and this is the first Jason's going to hear of it too, is Napoleon was, uh, part or phase two of the Kingshire development. You had King's Court was the cul-de-sac, Napoleon, and then you had Abraham. Abraham George was the third part. Well, Napoleon, phase two is complete. Napoleon is done. So. Doing a little research because the paving isn't done, I come across the fact that there is no bond. We're on the hook for the road. I did my due diligence today, did all the research I could. Apparently when one developer signed over the rights to the other, he, um, used a, um, bank note, a letter of credit that expired in 2015. Uh, business, this, I, y'all are going to find out anyways. It's the same developer that built our neighborhood, Joe. Who is currently building the two houses on Reservoir, who is also currently looking at developing the Sergeant Farm property on Depot. He has a different business name now, so there's no real way we can go after him. He basically gave me the runaround when I confronted him about it today. Uh, there's no streetlights currently. Nobody's been paying for the streetlights. Uh, we've had past complaints here come in and we've passed them on to the planning department that there's something wrong. The developer's not paying for the lights. We don't pay as the town until we take the road over. Um, I will verify on my way home tonight that the fact the lights are still off. This is something we're going to have to take care of. I don't know if it really concerns you all other than this goes back to my conversation about communication and road bonding and reducing bonds. Uh, it's very, very important that the board really, really get the input of the town engineer and the boots on the ground guys that watch this stuff as it's getting built. To me, just my two cents to you all that, I mean, reducing the bonds are great. And I understand we want to try to work with builders, but sometimes we've found so far that, you know, this one's going to be a costly one for us. Fortunately, the binder isn't all destroyed. There's a little bit of shim in, there's a little bit of stuff to go in there and fix. Uh, but it, it's basically a top coat with, with a little bit of patching. So tomorrow I'm going to meet the paving company out there, get some prices. But I, I believe it's going to fall on the shoulders of the Board of Selectmen. But I just want to let you guys know that this stuff's important. I, I know, you know, and, and, and I believe man, I'm not saying anything bad about planning or how they run or how they operate, but it just that better communications maybe to bring in the experts that know the roads and know the stuff, you know, it's a simple email. It's a simple conversation. You know, to help the town basically avoid this whole situation. And my camera went off.
Joe, don't you have some millings in it around your building?
The illegal pile of millings?
No, no, we won't go there.
Oh, believe me. I'll, I'll tell you all this. It, it is my goal to get that pile out of there and it never will be piled there again. We've made a spot in the backyard behind Public Works. It kills me to see that pile there. It really does. So we're, we've been actively working on trying to chew it up. But now it's as hard as a rock, let me tell you. It actually literally eats the teeth of the backhoe. We constantly are replacing teeth digging into it. The stuff really gets hard. So anybody that tells you milling is impervious, they are, they are very impervious materials.
So, so I appreciate the levity on that, but can I, do I want to ask how much that's going to cost us to fix?
Well, we will, I will have a better idea for you tomorrow. I just wanted to let the board know. Okay. Well, you know, maybe, maybe it should be a, a glass of bourbon and, you know, or maybe a couple for you before we actually talk about it.
Hey Jason, sleep well tonight.
I just want to point out, no, I don't want to point anything out. Having to fix a road is not something forward to.
Are you, are you, are you missing the man too, Jay?
Who's the man?
The guy who spells name forward and backwards? B O.
Joe, do you have anything more to report?
With you. It really was. It was a pleasure. I'm going to have to take early retirement apparently. That concludes my list. It'll be a lot smaller for you.
Joe?
Yes.
Uh, get in touch with me. I've got some information on one of those things that you, you have there.
Okay. Actually, I do need to get in touch with you. I believe you have to sign the MyLars and Joe, you have to sign a set of MyLars, correct?
Yes.
Oh, I know Dick, you're always around. Joe, when's a convenient time for me to stop to have you put your, John Henry on that?
I work right from my, uh, I work from home now.
Wow. Okay.
Not a home, not a home business. Not a home business.
I, um, I will stop with those and get you guys to sign them. Those are for.
The zone change on Bridge Street.
The zone change on Bridge Street. That you guys approved last meeting.
Right.
Joe, Joe, this is Frank. I want to thank you, Joe. You've done a lot of work and, and it's very commendable a job you're doing. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, it teaches us all that, uh, hands-on is much more important than anything else.
And Joe, thank you so much for the report. It's been very hard in the past to get a report of what was going on. You did a fantastic job reporting it out.
Well, thank you. Um, I actually downloaded this really neat app today that, um, I'm going to start using, which will allow me to attach phone calls or photographs to it. So I'll try to build some sort of a database for whoever is going to take it over.
What do you mean? That's your job.
I think my camera's off. Oh, my mic isn't though.
As, as I told Lenny when he was a student, less with the jaws and more with the claws.
Thank you, Joe.
Geez, Frank, I didn't think you were as old as Lenny. You don't look as old enough as, older than Lenny.
I'm going to be 81 in, what, the 19th of May.
Frank, you used to teach in a one-room schoolhouse?
Barbara Hill, that's where Lenny went.
Just for your information, I went to the Wallop School one-room schoolhouse.
I did know that. But I think we can all agree, Lenny's getting a little old.
Wait a minute.
Really?
There he is.
Really? Is that six feet apart?
Joe and Lenny.
Are you guys six feet apart?
Yeah, well, you know.
Absolutely.
Nice lights.
I, I got a paper here somewhere.
Okay, guys, we're not done yet.
Oh.
It's getting close to my bedtime here. Uh, under other business, um, uh, this afternoon, we got a email from Terry Han regarding the next steps regarding public involvement process. Terry's going to be, uh, consuming, um, or she's going to have a large part of her next agenda. But what, what she did is she consolidated her thoughts and ideas of what we collaborated on last meeting about how to move forward. And, um, I was curious if anyone had any comments or feedback. I know you just got it today. Uh, any preliminary thoughts or comments on, on what, uh, what Terry prepared today?
Yeah, Joe, this is Frank. I read it and I don't have it in front of me right now. There was three options and I liked the first option, uh, sending out letters and, you know, all that kind of stuff. It was the best of the three. It's not as good as a regular town meeting, but it's the best of the three.
Okay. Um, I don't plan on taking up a lot of time or any more time during this meeting to discuss it. I'm just making a fact that, making you all aware that it's out there. And if you have any comments, I think, um, geez, a point of contact. Um, who, who's, um, probably send them via email to Peg in, in, in the office. I know she's here in limited capacity. Um, so we can get these comments over to, um, uh, Terry regarding, if you have anything comments regarding what she said? Because we, we, we need to, we need to forge a plan of action moving forward. Any questions on that?
No. No, I just got it. Uh, I just looked at it before the meeting for three minutes. So I, I don't have a, a comment on it now.
Understood. But certainly we, we, we need a way in before the next meeting. So if you have any comments, just kindly shoot an email over to Peg. Well, I'll ask kindly that if she consolidated and if there's anything to talk about and just, and just forward them on to Terry. Um, are there, are there anything else for discussion tonight for the commission?
I, I don't have anything.
I'm all set, Frank.
I'm good.
Um, the entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Backing.
Take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Good night. And just for the record, I really appreciate the work of. And just for the record, I really appreciate the work of Lenny, Joe and Jason stepping up and assisting the Planning and Zoning Development Office in, in, in just keeping us, uh, keeping us informed and keeping us moving along. Thank you. Really, really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Joe.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Egg also, thank you.
Much more of an atmosphere of a team.
Yep.
Thank you. Just a bunch of committees.
Yep. Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, all.
Good night.